If you want to, you can ask what the motion is.
Yeah.
I don't know what you plan on doing.
All set? All right, we'll call the meeting to order if we could stand for the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Okay, so before we get started, I'd like to invite newly elected school committee person, Stacy Thompson. If you do want to come up and sit in front, you can. If you want to stay where you are, wherever you're more comfortable. You have 30 days to decide if this is what you really want to do, so. Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't hear back from Ms. Del Rossi, but we'll try to get her here for the next meeting. Okay, roll call minutes. So I need a motion to approve the regular scheduled special meeting minutes of Lowell School Committee, November 17th, 2021, and place them on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The permission to enter for this week are in the committee's packet. The recommendations, approval as written. Staff is available if there are any questions.
Any questions on the permission to enter? Ms. Martin? Just to approve, okay. Motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
And then next, 4-2, we have the approval of the updated contracts of Chief Academic Officer, Robin Desmond, Chief School Officer, Liam Skinner, to include additional language in paragraph one. Any questions on that?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I did, I did distribute two additional amendments. I believe they might be up on the podium, but each member has, and the difference between the ones that were published on Monday and the ones in front of the committee now are, for example, on Chief Academic Officer, it says slash Assistant Superintendent, and then it still maintains serving in the capacity of an Assistant Superintendent down in paragraph one. And I'd also like to point out, if you looked at Exhibit A and B as to compared to Exhibit D and E, in the Chief Academic Officer in paragraph four, there was a typo where I had misadded 56 and 20, and in the original version was 86. The day after the meeting, I discovered it should be 76. That's why it says 76081, and this version versus Exhibit A, which was previously voted. In regards to Chief Schools Officer, the one that was distributed to you this evening has slash Assistant Superintendent as it states in the memo. In paragraph one, it says comma, serving in the capacity of Assistant Superintendent, and I just wanted a note from Exhibit B, which you previously voted on till now. I substituted in Mr. Skinner's proper name of William from Liam, so there'd be no confusion in regards to that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hall. Any questions, Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I want to say I am very appreciative that we have added the Assistant Superintendent title back into these roles. I think it's very important for our authority as school committee members to have that title. Also, I want to make sure all the contracts have number seven, which that the person in the role will maintain superintendent licensure as required by the state. That's going to be, that's in both of these contracts. And then I have a question. Is there anything else that deviates from the standard Assistant Superintendent contracts that we have had in the past?
The ones in front of you, Ms. Dougherty, were, were templates, the old ones were, for Assistant Superintendent, were templates for these two.
Okay.
So like, for example, that Assistant Superintendent had been in, it was just carried over for these two roles when they were first done?
But I had assumed that the other ones, the chief ones, were also based on the same templates, but we had one that didn't have that Article VII. So that's why I'm asking to make sure there's been no other deviations. And I think we had a motion maybe a year ago that if there were any deviations, they would be redlined for us. But I am happy to see we put the Assistant Superintendent title back. I think it's been very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the contract as written. So motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call. I was gonna do it together.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, we have memorials. Tonight, we have a memorial for Kurt Zellwitz, who's Lowell High Security Guard. But as we all know, Kurt was much more of a security guard. He was a mentor, and he was of great importance to all the kids at the high school. Be very sadly missed, and just a shame, so. We could dim the lights. Thank you. Next, we have motions. 6-1, first motion tonight by Mr., oh, sure, Mr. Dakota.
Just a quick interjection about Kirk Zellwitz. I'm not sure how many people were aware that his funeral cortege went by the high school and was greeted by several hundred of our kids at the high school. That's how, that's the kind of impact he had on our kids at that, in that building, and other buildings, too. He was kind of going from different schools, from school, different schools, and he was just an absolute mentor to a lot of kids. And he was just so calm, and nothing fazed him. He was just, just a fabulous person. Having worked with him several times, several times at several events for the music department, he was just phenomenal. So again, a big loss for his family and a loss for the city and the Lowell Schools. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Sorry, I just want to add one thing about Kirk. So my son was very good friends with his oldest boy, Kirk. They swam together. And, and, you know, both my kids knew him because he was a bright light at the high school. He always had a smile on his face. And I think, as you said, Mr. Dakota, the staff and the students are going to miss him, and his family is just devastated by just such an exuberant, positive person. And it's, it's a real loss for our community.
Yeah, it really is. Sure, Mr. Dakota?
I went to his wake on Sunday, and the line, I said, well, I'm going to get there right at 1:00, because that's when it started, but the line already was out the front door, down the side of the Trigid Funeral Home, all across the back and past the corner, the back corner of the funeral home. It took me an hour to get through the line to get in, got in and out, and the line was still out to that corner. That's, that's how many people were going to see him. I saw a huge number of teachers from the building. It was evident that he was, he made a huge impact on a lot of people. Thank you.
He really did. It was quite a tribute, and we're going to make sure that we can do something in our small way to remember him at the high school when we have the new high school built. So, thank you. Back to your motion. Have a superintendent reach out to Aramark, ask them to provide school committee with a weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly menu for all schools. Is there a set size for portions regardless of grade level? Have there been shortages of food at times, at items at times, and, for example, breakfast cereal without milk or just a granola? Seconded by Mr. Lay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm getting a lot of reports on this, and they're not good reports, unfortunately. There's the reports of sour milk, if they get, sometimes they get milk that's past the, the good date. And this morning, I had a Facebook posting that showed a muffin that was covered with mold. This is just unacceptable. I mean, if there are shortages, then come right out and sell it, tell us that, what's going on. I mean, we need to know what this is. We're paying some fairly decent money. Didn't we upgrade the menu to get a higher level of quality of food? I'm not seeing that, honestly. I mean, the turkey dinner that we, that we served on Thursday, last week, on whatever the day it was, Tuesday, Friday, like, two Fridays ago, that, that was very, very good, but, you know, they knew the superintendent was going to be serving food that day. So I don't know if that's kind of pushed that a little bit further, but, you know, we have to get a handle on this before it gets out of hand. I just think we need to find out if there are in fact shortages, or if it's just one or two students who would just have it in for the cafeteria workers and have it in for the food in general. I mean, we all know that we don't have necessarily the fine palate of most kids, and so, you know, it might be okay for us, but kids are going to turn their face, turn their noses on it, and I get, I get that. But this has to be looked into. I think we need to make sure that they're, that they're serving what they're saying they're supposed to be serving. That's why I want to see these menus and offhandedly just kind of just pop in on a cafeteria and just see what they are in fact serving on that day. I think we need to keep them, keep their feet to the fire on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to add to what Mr. Dakota just said. You know, last week, Mr. Dakota and I had the pleasure to go to the high school and help serving the turkey dinner for lunch with the superintendent. That was a wonderful event. The kids were very happy. The kids called me and said that that was the best meal they had in the school. So I was very pleased to hear that. But to turn around and see the, what happened to the muffin this morning was a little bit disappointing. So I hope that we take action and make sure that we serve the right food, the good, good food to others, to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, next motion tonight, 6-2, by Mr. Dakota. Ask the superintendent and the mayor to set up a meeting with the city manager, facilities, subcommittee members from both city and Lowell Public Schools to discuss the feasibility of neighborhood schools and the acquisition of the St. Louis property, which should solidify the process. Seconded by... A second? Sure, Mr. Lay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been talking around and around on this one, and I have been cheerleading this effort to acquire the St. Louis property, which would really, not big investment as to comparing it to trying to build another middle school that we need to have in the Centerville area of the city. If we want to be able to go back to neighborhood schools, we need another middle school in that part of the city. And so this would provide us with that building. It would require some adjustments and upgrades necessarily, but the building itself is in great shape. Several years ago, a few years ago, actually, not several, it's three years ago, we did take a tour of that campus, and it is in great shape. Because you have to remember, the good nuns were taking care of those buildings, so they were making sure that kids weren't destroying any parts of their buildings. But I think in not, the consent decree that we are under in terms of school populations, John Dakota, I know, has worked really hard on making sure he'd figured out what would be necessary in order for us to get back to neighborhood schools. And by doing the purchase of the St. Louis property, which could, could be utilized for so many things, I'm not sure, I should probably have made a display of, a picture of that whole campus. It's a seven-acre parcel right in the heart of Centerville, and it has two standing school buildings. It's got an empty church, it has an empty rectory, and an empty convent, a huge parking lot, two huge parking lots. And, I mean, was my alma mater, I went to school at St. Louis, but I think that this would be a really, really good acquisition for the city. We would be able to save, on the average, about a million dollars a year in transportation costs alone. So within 10 or 15 years, the school building will have been paid off by virtue of that. So I think we need to kind of open that door, make the inquiries to find out if, if in fact the property is still available. I'm hearing stories to the contrary, but it would be good for us to be able to get these, to increase that middle school capability in the school system, and get back to neighborhood schools. Wouldn't it be great for our kids to be able to all go to the same school that live in that particular neighborhood instead of being carted halfway across the city or fully across the city? I think it's time, and I think we need to investigate this very, very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? So if you don't mind, I'll just, I'll try to set up the meeting, but it's my understanding that, from what I've been told, I haven't been there physically to see it, but I was told that the building needed too much work to get it up into conditions that would be acceptable today. And as far as the neighborhood schools, I wasn't sure that was still feasible, but we'll try to set up a meeting, and we'll just have a conversation, get it out on the table, so. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Ms. Clark. Review the current, review the current district dress code policy for culturally sensitive and gender neutrality. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I think it's been quite a while since this policy's been reviewed and, or written. And we do know that the policy itself tends to impact certain groups of students, specifically females, and really we want to get with the times, I think, and make sure that our policy can be applied evenly across the board and, and make sense for, for current times. So without any sort of body shaming, and just, so I think, I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Could you just clarify, so I've been out of here for a while. Is there actually a dress code, or are there dress? code, or are there dress things that are forbidden more than a dress code?
Right.
I didn't think we really had a dress code. I thought we just had kind of, "Don't wear this, don't wear that."
Right, which I think it's a policy that says these are the rules around the things that are not acceptable, so I don't know that, yes, but technically, it's a policy within our handbook.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. Any questions? No, okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Oh, yeah, we have a registered speaker, I'm sorry. Who's doing the registered speakers tonight? Oh, all right, you're here.
Monica Lundberg?
Maybe just hit the button up top, is that... Is that working? Yep, there it goes, I think it's green now.
All right, there we go. My name is Monica Lundberg of 12 Alyssa Drive, and I am a parent of a third grader at the STEM Academy. I wanted to speak in support of this motion. I think that our policy, which I have right here, if you wanted to see it, is, it's not the worst I've seen, but it could be better, and it leaves a lot of discretion, and where there is discretion, there's opportunity for bias. I'd like us to go even a little further than just reviewing it for things that maybe need to be reworded, but also putting in some explicit protections for cultural sensitivity and not just gender neutrality, but gender affirmation. I would love it to, there's a line in here that says, "Students are not permitted to wear any other dress that distracts, disrupts, intimidates, or provokes can be deemed inappropriate by the principal or his designee." And that gives administrators a lot of latitude, and I do not wanna step on the autonomy of administrators in any sense, but I do think that we need some protections in there for the most vulnerable of our kids. I would love to see something in there that explicitly states that kids cannot be discriminated against for non-binary gender clothing choices. And I don't know if that's something that has happened in our schools, but I do know that it's not something that's currently explicitly stated that those kids have that protection, and when you have a marginalized population, silence is often viewed as a lack of support. And I would love to see if that hasn't happened yet, which honestly, it would shock me if no kid has been discriminated against in our schools or in any schools in this country for their gender expression. But if nobody has had dress code issues with that, I'd like to see us take care of that before it becomes an issue, rather than waiting until it does. It's about being proactive rather than reactive. You know, something that I've noticed when looking on the DESI website at our demographics is that DESI does collect information about the gender of our student population, and Lowell is listed as having zero non-binary students. And for a district of this size to have zero non-binary students tells me one thing, that our non-binary students don't feel safe being out at school, because a district of this size, we do have non-binary students. They're just not being recognized for who they are, and we need to have those protections in place so that if there are, or when there are, students or faculty who take exception to a non-binary student or a boy who wants to wear a skirt, that those kids have the policy to back up that they can't be made to change because, well, it's disruptive because other people are bigoted. And so, I would really encourage this committee to keep that in mind as you're reviewing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Sure, Christopher?
Yeah, I really appreciate those words on the dress code policy. I saw this on the agenda on Monday, and I made a note to talk about it with my classmates today. One particular thing has to do with cultural sensitivity. It was durags still being an issue at the high school. I read the dress code policy today, and it still listed durags as something that wasn't allowed, along with like hats, hoodies, et cetera. Durags are sort of like a form of like hair protection slash treatment, depending on like what you wanna use it for. Some people use it for style. I've never seen that as an issue, and it's like to be wearing, but students who wear it, they feel really discriminated against whenever they're called out for wearing durags at the high school. I remember two years ago, the Black Community Club protested, there was a dress code policy against use of head wraps and durags, and they protested by wearing head wraps and durags, and eventually, that led to the lifting of the ban on head wraps. So, I hope that eventually there's a lifting on the ban of durags as well, 'cause that's still in the written policy.
Thank you. Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you. Before we go on, is that, I can't tell with the mask, is that Ms. Del Rossi in the back? Sure, so if you'd like, you could come up and have a seat and just share and see what's going on. We always have a tradition where we invite the newly-elected people to come up and sit, so you can sit on either end, you're welcome to. Congratulations. Yep. Do you have an extra agenda? Okay, all right. Next on the agenda, we have the subcommittees. Finance Subcommittee Report. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can give you a very brief report. So, we did have, the Finance Subcommittee had met prior to our previous meeting, two weeks ago, I guess. There were, basically, the key conversation point was we wanted to discuss the process and the progress with our contracts as they go through the kind of validation process, both within the school department and then in conjunction with the city, the law office as well as other purchasing offices, all the different kind of stops that a contract has to make before it can be signed off on. I think really the upshot of the meeting was that we all agreed that we'd all benefit both sides from having a bi-weekly meeting of staff from both our business office and the law department. They do historically meet with several departments on that kind of a regular basis to kind of track the progress of contracts and other items that are going through the law office, so I think that was the major, the key thing that we wanted to see coming out of that meeting. The city solicitor did agree that that would be helpful, and I think for the most part, that was kind of the key thing we walked away with. We had a brief conversation, I know, around the contracts, and I know accommodations were made to take into account the solicitor's concerns, so those have already, we've already approved those earlier tonight. So, I'd say, and again, I don't have the notes in front of me, so I apologize if I'm missing something critical, and I'd invite Ms. Turner or any of the members from the Finance Committee to add in anything I may have missed.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it was important to have this meeting, and I agree with my colleague that meeting with the city on a regular basis, at least till we get some of these snafus straightened out, but one big takeaway I had from it, and I think it was clear that the school department, we are responsible for providing complete and accurate information to the law department regarding the vendor, regard, you know, the name of the vendor, whatever the issue is, because the law department, it's not their job to check for those missing information or errors, so on our side, we need to be really complete and accurate in the information we're sending over. And even if that's chasing down vendor signatures, we talked about going to electronic signatures with the city is already using, I mean, I think there's still process improvements that could be made by these meetings, but the bottom line, and this reflects back to what we heard from the nurses about the immunization reports, that they were getting enrollment reports that were not complete, that were not translated, so this really behooves us to get our ducks in a row before we send the stuff over. So, I think that looking at the timeline and process issues and meeting with the city on a regular basis will help move us toward that, but I do see our primary responsibility is to get the information accurate and complete when we send it over, and that would be one of the takeaways I got from the meeting. As someone who was really concerned with the whole translation piece, that we didn't have that vendor in place, and I think it had a huge impact, as everybody here knows, it was a real concern for me. And I think that particular contract had a number of issues. It started in July, it was based on, you know, having to go to a new vendor because of not paying the old vendor, whatever complications, again, happened on our side, and then I think you did, there were a number of weeks waiting for signatures too, and getting information back and forth, so I think the key is the communication, and hopefully, these meetings will help with that, but the baseline for us is to have our contracts complete and accurate when we send them over. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
I agree, and I think one of the key takeaways that I walked away with is that, being that we are very good at communicating and have a paper trail to show all of the attempts that we made to clarify and to confirm that we had provided everything that they needed with no response, I think the meetings will help us with that, because if I send an email and you don't get a response, at least if you're meeting, you'll get that opportunity. I also wanna clarify, not clarify, but say that one of our key takeaways that happened that night was, again, the importance of meeting due to, I'm actually trying to remember what the point was. The point was that we are going to meet so that we don't have the issues, we're not legal people, we're not lawyers, so we give everything that the vendors give us. So, if a vendor changes their name, like the example that you used about the translation, contract fees were not multiple errors on the school department's side, I thought that we took that away that night. I thought that my backup documentation was able to show you that, no, we did indeed send an email on July 21st saying that the vendor had a different name. We can't do anything about that if the state websites don't have the updates. We can't do anything. We send it to the law department, if they look in the illegal database and find a different name, then they let us know, and we follow up with the vendor on that. So, I think we took away from that day the importance of meetings so that we can make sure we check all these things off. It's not mistakes on the school department's side, it's follow-up when someone doesn't have a vendor update, things like that. So, I think that was the takeaway.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion report to accept the report as a report of progress. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor? Reports of superintendent, superintendent COVID-19 update?
Thank you, Ms... Our microphones are quite loud today. Overcompensating for the masks, I think. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall will share with you the COVID update for this evening. Dr. Hall, are you prepared, or you need a couple of minutes to set up?
It's working, right? You need to use the arrows, so that's up to you. All right, great. So, sorry about the malfunction up there, but as you can see on this slide, we produced again the data. We did update it during the off week of the committee, but this report gives you the data for the shortened week right before Thanksgiving.
We just need one minute, 'cause we're not on the screen, so something's happening. Catch your breath, Dr. Hall. Technical difficulties all around.
No, you guys are slow and beat out. I know, I'm very fast normally.
If I can point out the exquisite color choice of Dr. Hall's tie and suit this evening, as did committee member Lay.
All three of them are gonna run for governor, so.
I was gonna say, it kind of matches my slide right here. You'll see it when it gets up.
Mr. Mayor, this is a standard report. Should we move through this one and perhaps give them time for the next two? I don't know if that might be the will of the body, but this is your standard report, and the next two get into some substance discussion, perhaps.
Yeah, if you just wanna give us an overview, Dr. Hall, we all have the report in front of us, so.
Sure, so on the district website and in front of you are the numbers for last week. As you can see, we're up to a total of 497 positives since August 29th for students and teachers, and you can see some of the schools had pool testing the week of Thanksgiving, and others didn't, but the thing to emphasize is what's in the positive case column, like when I first saw it, I need to explain this, that there may not have been pool testing at a particular school, but we got data from other sources that a student or teacher was positive, so that's why you might see a blank entry on weekly testing, but then see positive test results for a school that has a blank entry on testing. And if you move to the last slide on pool testing participation, we are increasing numbers, but you can see it went down from 25% to 16.6%, that's because we didn't have all schools pool testing last week, so that's why the number dipped there, not because the overall participation in schools participating went down, but we just didn't have it in certain schools due to the days that the holiday fell on. And that's it for the COVID update. Thank you.
By way of additional update, as of this morning, we did, were notified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that they are looking into additional resources to support additional testing in schools. If we experience locally any surges within the community that might warrant additional testing, DESI has contacted me and has notified me that they are available to provide additional resources, as they did with supporting transportation, if you recall, at the start of the year. We gladly accepted DESI's support and partnership and have told them that we will notify them if additional resources are needed.
Thank you. It's gonna be a few minutes, but the next report, do you wanna do that one verbally, or try to wait a minute for the screens to correct?
Mr. Mayor, if you're okay with taking them out of order, 8.4 is also a standard report that the committee is used to receiving that wouldn't require a visual image for the community.
The enrollment report?
The enrollment report is 8.4. The budget update and the social emotional learning may require viewing of data, but the enrollment report is a standard report.
Motion to take the enrollment report out of order?
Sure. Budget update. What's that report look like?
This one, John, yeah.
Yeah, but, Mr. Mayor, you should have a cover memo from Ms. Phillips, as well as a spreadsheet of current student enrollment numbers by location.
All right, so why don't we take A4 up? Any questions on the enrollment report? What's that?
Can we have a brief overview of it?
Sure.
If anything on the screen.
Sure.
It is called School Assignment Update.
Can you provide a brief summary for the committee, Ms. Phillips?
Sure, so, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, the enrollment report is the standard report that's shared. I believe we're sharing it once a month. Two important things to note is that the total number of students includes other categories, such as students who are awaiting special education review for services. It includes homeschool, preschool, early childhood, and students in the FRC category who have not yet been assigned to a school. So, the number of students actually attending school, if we add up just our 28 schools, is 14,100. is 14,112 students.
What's the FRC again?
Family Resource Center. So that category includes students who have initiated an application to attend Lowell Public Schools. That includes K through 12 students, as well as applicants for the pre-K, the pre-K seats. And as I shared in previous meetings, that wait list is often made up of families waiting for a full-time seat that has been filled.
So they have an assignment at another school, though?
For the pre-K?
No, for the 85 kids, they're not just sitting at home, right? They have another school they're in while they're waiting for another school, or?
Those 85 students are waiting to be assigned to school.
Okay. Could you just elaborate on that? What is that?
Sure. So if you look at the chart, the immunization verification, as of, as of last Wednesday, there were 20 students who were still awaiting medical clearance. 34 had initiated registration, but now needed to complete their documents, such as residency, birth certificate, immunization documents. And then 31 students, their assignment was pending. So those students had cleared everything on the family side, and now just needed to either be transferred to a school roster. In a couple of cases, the parents had completed their side, and there needed to be additional review for a special education placement, but those are largely the students who are in the assignment pending.
Okay. And most of them were probably newcomers, then? It's not like Lowell residents, right? They just moved in, most likely, and are waiting school assignments. And then I just have one other follow-up question. Mr. Superintendent, if you don't mind, how is the Resource Center, how are they doing as far as handling the workload? We did have a situation, I don't know all the details, but we did have a situation last week where we, a mother had called the office and she was struggling to get paperwork in, and it took about four weeks, three to four weeks, to get everything assigned so she could register her two kids. And it kind of was our fault, so are we, do we have the resources down there for the Family Resource Center?
I think additional resources are always beneficial. I think the recommendation that we provided was for what we called a parent ombudsman or family advocate that could be stationed full-time on the phone, that's not working clerical duties for registration, but full-time on the phone, because the call volume is that high. That, that recommendation I would still continue to make to the committee. Outside of that, however, anytime those questions do come to you as committee members, they really should be isolated. I can't, I can't commit that it's going to be 100% that you won't get those calls, but they should be isolated. And when you receive that call, please don't hesitate to call, call me directly. We'll get it processed if it is a question on our side of the process. And I believe in at least one case, I, Committee Member Lay had contacted me, and I believe within a matter of an hour, we were able to resolve it, that a, a family member had contacted Committee Member Lay with a, with a particular concern. So if those calls occur, if you're getting those, those questions, they really should be isolated, and if you're identifying any trends, please let me know immediately. And we are working towards 100% quality assurance, and that's the goal that we set. But in terms of resources, Mr. Mayor, I, I do continue to believe that a front desk receptionist, a family advocate, parent ombudsman role would be beneficial to the organization, someone whose sole responsibility is to help families navigate the organization via the telephone.
Okay. And one other quick question. So if someone, what happened with one person, and, and they had gone down, they didn't realize they had to make an appointment, so if someone comes down and they're unaware, are they that busy that we can't slide somebody in during the day to, to finish up whatever they need to do to get the kids enrolled, or how does that work? And do we change our policy on that, or?
Typically, what, what we've experienced is that if they go into the FRC and if there is an extended wait time for some reason, they will be redirected upstairs, at which point staff members upstairs, particularly Ms. Palazzo, will support them directly, or one of our community outreach liaisons. Otherwise, I, I can't speak to any specific circumstances outside of that. Ms. Phillips, do you have any additional data beyond that in terms of typical protocol?
No, most students should be able to come in. One thing that we are noticing is a high volume of families speaking Portuguese and Spanish, and that is taking a lot of time of our bilingual family liaisons who have duties that are assigned to other areas in the district, and, but they're not able to get away from the Family Resource Center. So one of the things we are thinking about is how do we ensure that we have the, the round-the-clock, well, not round-the-clock, but, you know, the language support in the Family Resource Center, especially for those two language, those two languages.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota, and then Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Is it a safe assumption, Ms. Phillips, that the assignment pending students, the 31, that by the next meeting, they'll all be in a, a school?
I would say it's a safe assumption that the vast majority are. Again, the, the placements outside of the Family Resource Center would be a, a student with special needs that needed a, a special type of programming. And then also, my staff did follow-up with families today, and families have different reasons for, you know, starting on Monday versus, versus, you know, a Wednesday, so, but I would expect that almost all students should be placed by that point.
Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Honored. A couple of questions about the, the numbers that are still waiting. Those 31, is this in addition to the 398 that we heard about in September? These are new people? Or is there an overlap on these numbers of students who are still waiting to go to school?
These numbers would have been polled since October 1st.
Okay. So then they weren't reported, these are new people, 85 new people that have come in since October 1st. So back to the October 1st number. In the beginning of your report, you said that we have 14,112 students attending Lowell Public Schools, but I don't think that was the number we gave DESI, right? It seems like it's off by over 100 students. We gave DESI a lower number on October 1st.
So we don't provide DESI with the number, so there's a, so it's a verification process, it's a constantly moving process with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They can see all of our enrollment in real time. What they take is a snapshot on October 1st. So of the students with a snapshot on October 1st, it goes then through the month of October with a verification process. There would be other school districts that were also claiming students, meaning they were on those, those schools' ledgers as of October 1st as well, which could be this. It could be an example of a student who withdrew without notifying us of withdrawal. We had them listed as absent, but instead they attended at another school during that window, so now two districts are claiming a student with the, with the same state ID. We go through that verification process. Now, that's just one example. Moving through that verification process, ultimately DESI will tell us, here's the confirmed number for your snapshot. What we work to do then is obviously to ensure that we're giving 100% of the students that are eligible based on the state's data, that there's not another district claiming a student, because what you're noticing, Committee Member Doherty, is that oftentimes the number that's a snapshot on one day might be vastly different than a snapshot on another day, and you're seeing here in November, the snapshot is 14,112. For us, we'll continue to, we expect this year to continue to increase those numbers, but the snapshot for funding is the October 1st. So it's a, it's a more complex process than simply sending a number. It does go through that verification, and the way that students are moved off, and it would still occur even with the 14,112. A student could very well be on our rosters that we're assuming is absent without, and they are actually enrolled in another district, and vice versa, and that, and that's what occurs with the verification.
Well, that is what my concern is, because the number is 100 not in our favor. We're, we've got hundreds more students in class than the state is recognizing by that snapshot. And I just want to make sure, I mean, if they came in after October 1st, you know, there's not much we can do about that, but I think that it is an important number because our funding is based on that number, and we have the needs if we've got the students in our classroom.
Absolutely right.
The other comment, if I could just, I think with the Family Resource Center, I know you've mentioned this ombudsman role, and I noticed in the presentation that Assistant Superintendent Skinner gave us at our last meeting, that for our goals for providing improved customer service to our families, one was to have a third-party audit of the Family Resource Center. I would prefer to do that before we throw any more staff in, because I'm looking historically at the number of bodies we've had in the Family Resource Center in the past, where our, our school attendance numbers have been about the same. So I really don't want to invest more money in staff until we look at the system as a whole, and how we can improve our service to families. Because certainly, if a family member comes down to the Family Resource Center in person, takes time off from work, whatnot, we, we want to provide service for those families. Our, our goal is to be a welcoming school district that helps our families, especially as Assistant Superintendent Phillips mentioned, many of our families don't speak English as a first language, which is why we invested in the bilingual parent lease on positions. So I really think that that audit and the information recommendations that come forward from that will help us determine what other steps we need to take to provide more efficient, effective, and welcoming Family Resource Center, which I know is our goal. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. With the ombuds person that was recommended, is language a preferred qualification?
Yes, for all of our community-facing positions, we have a preference for bilingualism. We've been fortunate to hire one hexilingual individual, but absolutely bilingualism, preferably in a high-frequency language, which for our community is Spanish, Portuguese, Camai, and with increasing frequency, Swahili.
Right. So because my understanding was that our family liaisons that are bilingual are not necessarily meant to be in the Family Resource Center translating, they really have work that they're doing across the district. So it sounds like there really is a need. Certainly, an audit always helps to support and identify where there's need most, but if we're really struggling to provide translation services within that department, that doesn't necessarily sound like something that, if, if this work is being, someone is being taken away from other work that they really need to be doing, it does sound like there's a high need for us to be providing an additional body with some very specific skills. And I think all of us have dealt with family members and people who have worked to try and navigate our system, which we know can be difficult even in English, and so certainly in a second language, perhaps even more difficult. So I do think that this is still a very important position to add, as well as conducting an audit to ensure that we are effective and as efficient as we possibly can be. So I would make a motion to take a look at that position again and bring it forward, because I don't know that, an audit certainly takes some time to do, and it sounds like we really do have a need if we want to ensure that we are providing our families with the best services, both when they're in the Family Resource Center, as well as other services that are required that our family liaisons are needing to provide and perhaps not able to at this point in time, so.
What was the position again?
The, I don't know what the official title is, but we've been calling it an ombuds, a Family Resource Ombuds Person, I think?
An ombudsman or, or family advocate. I believe the last title that we had discussed was family advocate, but parent ombudsman was certainly one within discussion. What that would work, Mr. Mayor, is it's somebody that would be able, full-time on the, on the other end of the receiving line of the phone, as parents call into the Family Resource Center, they get a live person that can help them to navigate the organization. What we're finding is that families will often come to the Family Resource Center without enrollment questions, but instead simply looking up that it's a Family Resource Center and coming with a variety of questions. So whether it be enrollment or any other need coming into the district, or somebody there on the other end of the phone, which we work to staff, but as Committee Member Clark is pointing out, oftentimes it will be somebody who's being pulled from another duty to, to serve that phone line, because the individuals who are staffed within the Family Resource Center are actively working to enroll and register students. So if it is our bilingual family liaisons who are often down there, their typical role or their standard role is to be out in the community as outreach liaisons within the community. So that position, I believe, came to you as a family advocate as of last, but we can certainly bring it back if the committee would like to contemplate it at the next meeting.
All right. I, it probably should be brought up at the next council, though. We have one meeting left, and we'll let the new committee members come in and take a look and.
Right. Can I just ask, though, didn't the city add someone, you know, pre-pandemic, didn't the city have someone sitting downstairs here in City Hall to even meet people and be able to direct them based on their needs?
Yeah, that's like a volunteer greeter, though.
Oh, got it. Okay. Okay. But it sounds kind of like there's a similar need, and certainly a volunteer wouldn't necessarily make sense in the school committee, so, or the school district, so. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, I do think that, that we are particularly well-poised right now, because now is the time for us to be able to lay the groundwork for what next year is going to look like. You know, obviously, we've made it through the crush of the beginning of school, of school, so I wouldn't necessarily think that now is the time to just put this position in place. I also think, I mean, I think we could benefit from some additional information, because even, again, just in our conversation tonight, we're not describing an, an ombudsman. We're describing a receptionist, we're describing a, a referral agent, we're describing a, you know, a translator. I mean, these are, these are all important things, and I, I don't discount that we need additional resources in the, the Family Resource Center to do it, but it can't be a haphazard thing that we just, again, put one more position down there. I, for one, would love to see us go through an audit, more importantly, go through a real functional review of what's happening, what we're expecting to happen in our Family Resource Center, where we could be doing better, you know, where the holes are in terms of resources, in terms of technology, and in terms of people, so that we're making a comprehensive change to this unit of our district. You know, we've had challenges for many, many years. They predate this administration, they predate the last administration. Being able to effectively provide these services for families is one of the critical things we need to do, and we're not doing it to our best, to our best advantage at this point. So I would really recommend that now is the time in this kind of January, February timeframe, where the school department, the administration can put together, what is the Cadillac solution that we're looking for? Prior to budgets, prior to our putting in place all of the other kind of preschool year planning, let's put together a comprehensive plan that we can back up with, with accountability measures that tell us how many times the phone is ringing, how long it takes for a phone call to get returned, all those metrics that we kind of, you know, talk about where we're getting it anecdotally from families that they call every day, you know, for three weeks before someone calls them back. Is that true? We don't know. So we need to put in place the, the, the measures so that we can really talk with real authority about what the concerns are and what we can actually invest in this effort to make it more effective. So, I mean, I think that's a charge that will come, you know, as we start with, as was mentioned, we'll be starting with a new committee come January. I think that will be a perfect opportunity for the administration to be able to pull together, again, what they think, what they want to recommend going forward, and be able to show this next committee what the metrics that will be in place, so that we'll have concrete measures to, to guide us.
Thank you. Sure, Ms. Phillips?
And, and I support that as well. I think it's important for us to have that kind of detailed review, using the data that we do have, right? Identifying data we don't have, but also looking at the policies and the systems, right? So we did make a switch to the online, and this is the opportunity right now that we're looking at, at the online platform. How did that work for us? I also asked my staff to talk with some of their colleagues at other districts. We're not the only district that places centrally. We have received some interesting feedback from other districts about how they are, in particular, reviewing the immunization records. And in one case, a district, the clerks review them and make decisions on, on medical clearance, and also in... And also, in some of the districts, if a family produces a record of an appointment for an immunization, that also qualifies them to begin attending school immediately. So I think that we can look at data, we can look at systems, we can look at policies, and then with the time that we have, come up with a good plan.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add to that bilingual parent liaison. We have one per language for the school our size. And I don't want people to feel that we have too many because actually, we don't have enough. Everywhere I go, people always tell me, staff, even the staff, tell me that we need more. I go to the high school. Every day, they tell me, we need one parent liaison, right at the high school. So I just want people to know that we're not having these positions. We don't have the extra parent liaison at the central. We need more. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Are you all set, Ms. Doherty? Everyone else is all set? All right. Thank you. Should we go to the budget report, then?
It'll be the... It'll be the SEL mental health supports. If the cameras... Is the camera working, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's not working yet. That's why I thought you...
Oh, okay.
Go to the budget.
Yes, if that's the preference of the...
Not the budget transfer, but the budget update.
If that's the preference of the committee, certainly. There is going to be a couple of line items that may not make complete sense, but you'll... Because it was scheduled to be subsequent to the SEL report. However, nonetheless, if that be the will of the body, we can make that adjustment. Ms. Turner, if you could, just preface the lines that relate to Ms. Desmond's report.
Excuse me for one second. So I guess we can get the report up. So if you want to go back to the social-emotional learning...
That works for you, Mr. Mayor?
Yep. You just have to let them know when you want to go to the next slide.
All right. I guess there's not a need for us to carry the remote. Is that going to work for you, Ms. Desmond? If so, Ms. Desmond is prepared to provide the committee with the update that we discussed at the last committee meeting. So, Ms. Desmond?
Thank you. If we could just go to Slide 3? Perfect. So this presentation incorporates some of the requests that Ms. Doherty had made in her motion from the last school committee meeting. So the data that is within this presentation is the data that was requested in the motion. So how we are supporting social-emotional learning and mental health issues are different. So I will start with the social-emotional learning. This is a review from what I have presented in the past. We are using the DESA system, the DEVERO system, which assesses students. Teachers who have students in their classrooms assess students for social-emotional learning needs. If we could go to the next slide, please? The DESA assessment is a seven-question assessment, and depending on how the students rank within that assessment, a larger-scale assessment is completed if necessary. Again, this is an assessment that's completed as a benchmark at the start of the year. Then there's a winter assessment, and then a later assessment. Next slide, please? This is the timeline for how the DESA system works. And again, as school starts, the teacher becomes familiar with the student, conducts the fall screening assessment, and then analyzes the data. There is some greater scales that are completed if a student falls within a needs-support category. And then a winter assessment screening is done. Again, that data is then analyzed, and again, there are updates on student behaviors and needs. And then there is a spring screening that is also assessed, and that data can be analyzed for all three assessments to look at whether there is progress or not for each student. If we could go to the next slide? Some of the SEL curriculums that are currently in our school, and these curriculums have been in our school for a few years now. We've expanded on them, and we have provided professional development for schools. Next slide. The first curriculum, which has been in the district for a very long time, is Second Step. It's a K-8 program that provides social-emotional learning for students. It really focuses on trying to reduce impulsivity and aggressive behaviors while building empathy. Next slide, please? The other curriculum that is offered within our district is a K-5 curriculum, and it is Open Circle. Again, it has very similar areas of focus where we're really trying to identify what positive behaviors are, positive problem-solving skills, and how students utilize those skill sets to develop positive relationships with peers while managing their own emotions and developing empathy for others. Open Circle is in some of our elementary schools, and we have some staff in-house who are trained to be trainers. Next slide, please? Restorative Justice is also something that we have had in the district for several years. And what we've done is expanded it throughout our middle schools. So it started out in one middle school several years ago, and over the last three years, we've expanded to our Renaissance middle schools and also the high school. And again, restorative justice is really a way of students talking about what has happened and how to accept responsibility for what they may have done, and then also, how do they provide supports for the people that they have offended and provide ways of resolving the conflict? And again, that's something that we're working on teaching children at our middle schools, in particular, our Renaissance middle schools and also bowl high school. If I could then go to the next slide, please? So what does our current DESA data tell us? And these are the ratings that were requested at the last meeting. And if we could go to the next slide? By school, you can see that we have students who social-emotional learning is a strength. We have others that are typical compared nationwide to their peers. And then we have a need for additional instruction category. And as you can see in each grade level, that red area is where students really need additional supports on how to manage peer relationships and their empathy for others and learn more behavioral supports. Next slide? Another request for data was for the failure-to-compel intruency data. And so I went to our attendance officer, who was able to provide me data for each grade level for the last several years. So the next slide is a comparison slide. And so the red are the truancy applications, and the blue are the failure-to-compel attendance data. And so if you compare, you'll see that over time... And I wanted to make sure that we had a typical school year represented, which would be 1819. As you remember, 1920 in March, we had to go to a remote situation because of COVID. And then the 2021 year was mostly remote. So you can see that there are variances in those two years. But if you look at the 1819, that was a full in-person school year. And then if you compare it to 2122, the data, in some cases, are similar, but in other cases, the data is less this year. So again, I think it's good information to have. But I really, based on this information, couldn't really draw any conclusions about this year versus other years. But I just want to make sure that that data is there. And again, the top data is total applications. And then if you look down to the far bottom-left is by grade level. Elementary being blue, red, middle school, and yellow, high school. And then over to the other side, the right side, is the truancy applications by grade level. And we don't have any elementary represented there over time, but we do have some high school and middle school applications. Next slide? This was another piece of requested data, the 51As, which are DCF filings. And they are broken down by grade level. So we have elementary, middle, and high school. These are the filings to date. I asked our principals to provide us that data. And I did work with Attorney Ortiz to make sure that this data is represented in such a way that makes sense for our district. What I do want to mention is that these numbers do not necessarily speak to... In some cases, there might be multiple filings for one particular family by various staff members. And so we really can't discern that from this data. So I just want to point that out.
Just before we go in specifically on the 51As, but this is just our accounting of the number of times our staff filed. It has... So we don't even have the information from the department that tells us how many were accepted as... Okay, so just so we understand, you know...
Yes. So I was going to clarify that as well. Oftentimes, when a 51A is filed, because we are all mandated reporters, we have to file if we hear something that seems file-able. But sometimes those are screened out. And so this is just data on what has been filed. And again, it could be representative of, you know, if a child has five teachers in a day, it could be that all five teachers have filed on the same situation. So I just want to be clear that this data is a little bit hard to draw conclusions based on this information.
Can I ask on this slide as well?
Sure.
Sure.
I mean, I have other questions.
Yeah, I have other questions. Go ahead, Ms. Doherty.
So if five teachers file on the same student, would it appear as five filings? Or would it appear as one? So these numbers might be...
These are how many 51As were filed. So if two teachers filed based on a child providing them the same report in a day, that's two.
And we don't know what DCF then does with that. And this is for what time period? Because I was looking to compare, like, are we filing more than we did in the typical year, which goes back to 2018?
So this was just from the start of the year until November 18, when the request was made, the motion. Our attendance office can do some more investigating around the filings to be able to provide us some comparative data. But I just wanted to get data to you as soon as possible because this is important information. And so I just wanted to make sure that we got something out there that was accurate to date, and we can come up with more comparative data with more time for the attendance office because the attendance office does collect this information as well. And I'll just wait for the presentation to come back up. We just have another piece of data that was requested. If we could go to the next slide, please? And this is calls for ambulances for mental health concerns. This is, again, broken down by the school level. And this is not broken down per student. So when I say that, it could be that a student in the last three months has a need for multiple calls. Those numbers would be reflected here because this is per call. The other thing I will state is that when a student is brought by ambulance to the hospital, there is not necessarily a course of action. So they may be released and maybe home that night, and maybe there are no services provided. So it all really depends on how someone presents when they are at the hospital and what services they're able to access. So again, I just want to be clear on that piece. Next slide?
Could I just jump in real quick? What happens when an ambulance is called? Does that fall on the student's parents, or does that fall on the school district? The cost, yeah. Goes to the students? Okay. All right. So do they give them the option at the time, though, or just now? Okay. All right.
Can we pause on this for a minute? Because these numbers seem incredibly low just from the emails that we've been getting since the beginning of the fall. It just doesn't seem... The data doesn't seem to reflect what I'm hearing on the street, what I'm seeing in our own notification, so...
So this data was... I requested the principals to provide me this data. So this came directly from the building leaders?
Because it is an extreme thing to have a child taken out by ambulance because of...
I mean, I kind of thought the same thing, but there are...
I mean, I'd have to go back and check my emails, but it seems like it's way more than this. And the other piece, and to your point, Ms. Desmond, there aren't much services, many services out in the community for these children. When, you know, they get taken out by ambulance, and then what happens? What supports are there for them?
And I do want to clarify that the request was for data for students who were suffering from mental health concerns. So if someone had an asthma attack or an allergy attack or anything else and was taken out by ambulance, that's not included in these numbers. I specifically asked for that.
I mean, that was accurate. That's what we asked for because that's based on the emails we're getting, and it's happening across the district.
And again, it is just till November 18 or 17, whatever that date was that I asked for. So it's only representative of a small amount of time during the school year.
And do we have comparative data on this to look back at what was in 2018? How many kids were taken out by ambulance then? And how does that compare? Because that's another way for us to measure and see what is the mental health of our students. And is it something we're thinking anecdotally? We're hearing from our staff anecdotally? So is that also going to be forthcoming with the additional 51A data that compares to the previous year?
I could request that information from the building leaders if I could do that, yeah?
We're not collecting that information at Central Office. And you know what? I have to just stop for a minute and say, Ms. Desmond, it's huge that you are presenting this information because we used to have an Assistant Superintendent for Student Support Services, and Ms. Desmond's job is curriculum. And so I realize you already have your curriculum piece on and that this is an add-on. But I think that we used to track this information and have this data that we could get, look back, without having to go to the principals and ask them that we tracked it at Central Office. That was under the realm of Student Support Services. That has little pieces have been now distributed. And so I don't mean to be adding more on your plate, but I think this is important information and that we should be able to... We should be tracking it at Central Office and not having to ask each principal. Although I would think that the schools are also aware of the students that are being sent out by ambulance, aware of the students that are getting filed 51As on, all that. But it just... I think it speaks to a need here that is much bigger than just this particular issue in terms of student services. I have comments about the whole report, but I would... I'll let you finish. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Great. So some additional resources that I think would be helpful for the schools based on the information that we have and hearing the need is the additional social worker at each school. And so that is something that I think, you know, based on our SEL strategies and the supports for students and the recommendations for evaluation and services is definitely a need. But with that said, I also know that in many times when we have posted positions in this environment, we haven't had a lot of applicants. So I would also recommend that if we are able to post an additional social worker position for schools... that we also be able to put out an RFP for a contingency plan in case the applicants are not there. So those would be some suggestions that I would make. And then if we could just go to the last slide. The next steps, if, if, if this is acceptable, would be to post additional social worker positions and also be able to develop an RFP for a contingency that if we do not have enough applicants, that we could perhaps contract with an agency that would allow for some social worker support in our schools. And then based on the DESA timeline that I've already discussed, you know, winter is another opportunity for us to gauge how kids are progressing, how our students are progressing with the social emotional learning curriculums that are being taught in the schools. And then also our attendance office is continuing to monitor the CRAs, the FTCs, the fifty-one As. And so we will continue to provide those supports to schools with the attendance team going out to schools and supporting the work around attendance with the administrative teams and families. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? You have more quick, yep, Ms. Darney.
Thank you very much, I apologize. I think this is very important. So if we could start with the DESA assessment. Were all students rated? What's the completion rate?
I can get you those numbers, but our, we asked all of our teachers to have the, the ratings completed by the end of the election day in November. So I can certainly get you those numbers.
So, and, and here's my concern, I know it's, it's a, it's one tool. And like any tool, it's got some failings and there are people that love it and there are people that hate it. It takes five to eight minutes, I believe, to ask the seven questions. But every teacher knows that if you get certain answers to those seven questions, you then have an additional seventy questions? I think, I might not be accurate on that. So a teacher who's already strapped, and we didn't give every first grade teacher a para, I would have loved to have done that, is now being asked. So you have a child, you have to assess them. If they answer these seven questions a certain way, you've got another seventy that you're going to ask. So that begs the question, what is the benefit for the teacher? Are there going to be additional supports? And so I, I've got some concerns about the DESA. And then again, when you look at the data, it doesn't seem to be such a huge problem, except for the high school. Nine, tenth, ninth graders, twenty-four percent needing support. Where kindergarten, first grader, only ten percent needing support. It doesn't rise to the level of what we're hearing from our staff about how difficult the children are, how difficult time the children are having. So that, there's a disconnect there that worries me. And, and since I did point out that the, the ninth graders had the highest percentage of needs at twenty-four percent, which is huge. One out of four high, high school ninth graders need supports in these areas. This report really doesn't address the high school. Because, and, and then if we could just move on to, when you talk about the, the programs that we're using, the curriculum. And I know it is evidence-based curriculum, which all our curriculum should be evidence-based. But my understanding, open circle, second step, as you mentioned, we've had them a while, but they're really geared towards first tier one and tier two. It's, it's more not when you're flipping out, right? And it's, it's an ongoing learning thing and it's elementary, right? And middle school, it doesn't impact the high school. And so I'm just, my question then is, what evidence-based programs are we implementing for those high needs, the kids that are really stressed out? What, where we need interventions, where we need direct service? And what, if any of those, are we doing?
Right, so the high school actually is implementing a new social emotional curriculum. It, it is called Wonder. And it's specific for the high school grade level. So that is a work in progress.
Okay.
And we tried it out at the Career Academy. And the Career Academy felt as if it was a, a, a good program for that level of, grade level of student. And so that is something that we're working on at the high school now. Tier three really is something that is provided through social workers, licensed social workers. So, you know, the social emotional curriculum is just that, it's curriculum. And it's really to teach children about how you manage emotion, how you develop good peer relationships, how you become empathetic for situations that you may not have experienced yourself, right? But others are experiencing. But really, tier three is provided by our licensed social workers. And so that's really my recommendation is to improve or increase social worker supports within our schools because there definitely is a need for that.
And if I could just follow up with this last thing, I would agree with you. But I think it's more than just adding more bodies to the district, more social workers. We need a systemic approach that's going to include, let's figure out what's the best evidence-based intervention, tier three supports that social workers can implement, let's provide professional development, the supervision, the leadership, all that. So I'd like to make a motion to add a third bullet to your recommendations, that we do a third-party overview. Now, some of you might recall, this was done years ago, of our student services department where that was when we went from, we used to have all the social workers at central office, right? And then we had this review come in, and I don't remember the name of the organization that did it for us. And it's like a couple of weeks, you come in, look at what we're doing and make recommendations that are going to complement the hiring of additional social workers, right? And what we determined under that review, which had an immediate impact, was the social workers are going to be better off, instead of going all over the district where there's a need to be based at a school or a couple of schools, depending on how horrible the caseload was, where they could develop relationship with the school leadership, develop relationships with the families and the students. So that was a huge positive move for us. Not that we ever did this good enough, but I think we're at a critical point here where between the stresses on our families and our students and our staff, we need to really reassess more than just putting bodies into the district that we may or may not be able to keep. I mean, that's the other issue. But to really look at what is the most effective way to do it. So, and I know I'm going on, and I'm sorry, Ms. Sheehan, but my motion would be to request the administration research and recommend, recommend a third party to come in and review our social services programs and make suggestions and for how we should move forward organizationally and as well with evidence-based strategies for helping those students, those tier three students. I can shorten it. It's left at the top of my head, I'm sorry.
So a motion made by Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin, you have a question?
If I could. And I do think that that makes a great deal of sense. I also think that we need to, there is a differentiation in kind of specialization in this. When we talk about the curriculum we want to use, I mean, those are curriculum systems that are basically being used for our general population. I think the investment we're talking about here is in true social workers. Their work is one-on-one. So there, you know, I do think that doing a review of available systems would be really helpful. And I think part of what I think would, would be, I think, helpful as we're kind of looking at the way this is going to get rolled out. Because again, this is a huge investment. Basically with, well, twenty-nine, twenty-nine new social worker positions. I think we all anticipated that we were going to need to make some kind of investment like this. I think at the, we were saying at the beginning of the year, we were saying during, even during the budget conversations, that we knew that the social emotional supports that we were going to need, particularly this year, were going to be extreme. So I, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of bringing on these positions. But I think if we could get a better sense of structurally how they'll be deployed, even if it was, because I'm looking at the breakdown here with five to the high school and, you know, some schools, you know, will be sharing and all that. I'd love to know what happens, like what the process is going to be when you have a teacher who goes through this assessment process, asks the seven questions, asks the next seventy questions. How then does that translate to that child getting connected with the social work support? How does the family get engaged with that? Like, how is that, because that, I think, is where the, the healing will happen. So I, I just think that that would be really, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of moving forward and, and, because I do think filling these positions will be a challenge. So getting them posted as soon as we could would be helpful. But I think for our purposes, even, you know, I hate to say it, we have one last meeting. But if, at that last meeting, we could get that kind of flow chart, that org chart that would show us how this gets deployed in a really effective way, I think that would be really helpful.
Sure, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two-part questions. Go back to the social emotional learning. That is new term, I guess. I, I haven't heard about that until recent years. So in our curriculum, how, how is that being taught? How, do we have a specific course for, to teach the students?
Right, so we have a research-based curriculum. The schools have been able to choose which one they would prefer, which works best for their organization. So if it's open circle, then it's, it's a set of lessons that teachers teach at their, during a particular portion of their school day with the children. If it's second step, it's the same. We've had second step in the district. When I was a principal, we had it at the school that I worked at. So it's been in the district, I would say, probably in some schools, eleven, twelve years. And it, it's usually done during a thirty-minute block or twenty-minute block. And it really helps children sort of talk about situations and how to handle them. You know, sometimes it's how do you, how do you handle a situation in the playground during recess? Or, you know, how do, how do you talk nicely to your friends? And it starts at a really young age. What we have done more recently over the last three years is we've implemented second step at all of our middle schools. So that all of our elementary schools that have had that curriculum, we now have a roll-up through eighth grade of a very similar CASL-approved curriculum. And so that has been an investment for our district. We have not, we did not have that K through eight up until recent years.
So if you look at the students' report card, like on, I mean, schedule on period, it will say social emotional learning period?
It, it's not a separate course. It's built into the school day within a period of time. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's circle time in the morning, sometimes it's after recess. It really depends on the structure of the school and where it works best for the school's schedule. But it's not a graded course. It's, it's a set curriculum that's embedded within the school day.
Okay, thank you. So the second part of my question is to Ms. Dorothy's motion. Is it necessary to hire, to spend money to hire somebody from the outside to, to look at our curriculum? Are we not doing it right? Is that why we want to hire somebody to look at our, what, what we're doing?
I'm not talking about looking, can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Darney.
The motion is really to review student services overall and look at how we're delivering these supports to our kids. Because I think it's, it needs help, right? We need to, we need to do some work in that area. And we've done that before. You have an outside audit come in, just like we're doing with the Family Resource Center. And they can look from outside at the whole system and make recommendations.
So why don't we ask the superintendent about that before we hire somebody from outside to look at it? That's how I look at it.
Just to have an outside look. You got to look, sometimes you got to look from outside the circle, so, that's all. Any other questions, Ms. Clark?
I would agree with Mr. Lay's comment. I think that certainly there are some best practices and some systems that are being used here in the district that are probably used widely in other districts. I think the Ms. Darney's example of the social workers at the schools makes really good sense. And it sounds like that was a, a big improvement. And the recommendation that we perhaps are adding additional social workers, which I think was something that we talked about going into this school year. You know, this isn't a mystery. We were, it's still in pandemic and mental health is a, a major issue right now, not just for our children, but adults, our staff, really everyone. So additional supports where needed, I think, make good sense to be supporting in this area. But it doesn't look to me like we're really doing something or not doing something. It doesn't look like we're really going out on a wire and doing something completely out of the norm. It sounds like we're really trying to do enough to support the students who are kind of in the middle here and then figuring out what additional supports we can provide to the students that are really having additional needs. So I think that the recommendations that are brought forward tonight make good sense. I think they're coming from some of our experts here in the room who certainly have worked in the education space for a long time. And I would imagine also work with colleagues that they talk to as well as reading publications and understanding what best practices are out there. So, thank you.
Any other, Ms. Darney?
Yes, I'd like to just to address my colleagues' concerns. Currently, we don't have a qualified clinician at the superintendent level in the district. When we disseminated this, the student services piece and spread it out, we lost that leadership. So I think that just bringing in a very expensive twenty-nine social workers without having an overall plan regarding, you know, professional development with evidence-based interventions at that high-tier level where you're really providing direct support to students who have been identified as needing that support, I think the two really go hand in hand. I don't think that you would want to invest millions of dollars because you're talking, if it was two-point-four million to hire twenty-nine teachers, I would think it's going to be that, if not more, for twenty-nine social workers. And to not do that audit, to do that review, kind of like what you said with the handbook, you know, the dress code? It hasn't been looked at in a long time, I think over fifteen years. And the needs have changed. And the organizational structure has changed. I think that's, every dime of that would be well-spent. And I'm certainly not telling the superintendent what third-party auditor do. We did have success with that other one, but I don't even remember the name of it. I would be looking for recommendations from the administration. But I think it behooves us to do this the right way and not just try to, and I think it's going to be difficult to fill those bodies too. So we need to be looking at a number of different ways of really improving the system as we need to.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, we could certainly-
Sure, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. We can definitely bring a recommendation back to the committee. I would urge caution with delaying any direct resources getting to students. Getting the positions posted, we do have concerns with staffing shortages across this organization and across industries nationwide. So we have provided a secondary recommendation as well, which is to put forward an RFP to see if we can bring in outside services to provide direct services to students. That's a significant step for this committee. And I would highly recommend that we take both of those steps simultaneously while we can. And I have high confidence in Ms. Desmond's leadership of this work and the incorporation of this work within the academic realm. And I'm sure that we will have conversations subsequent to this and we'll bring back any additional recommendations at, at additional meetings. But this is not an environment where, where it would benefit us to delay added resources within our schools. And I would encourage the committee to take both of those recommendations with the sense of urgency that our kids require right now. And we will bring back subsequent recommendations at the next meeting if we have them for the committee.
Sure, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. And I think to that point, because I do think it's critical that we want this, we need this work to begin now. I mean, I would posit that as you're developing your RFP, it would make sense to incorporate, you know, what we'd really be looking for would be a mental health partner. We would want an organization, I mean, they, South Bay, there are a number that I know you already work with, an organization that could come in and quite honestly be able to provide both aspects of that information. They'd be able to provide actual, you know, counselors and, and the actual resources to, to work with students, but could also provide that kind of high-level review of how the services are getting implemented. And I think if, as part of your RFP, you built that into it, And I think if, as part of your RFP, you built that into it, you could really kill all the birds with all the stones. And that would give us the information, A, it allows us to move forward quickly, but it also shows, you know, it's the due diligence that we know, long-term, we need to have a real system in place. And I do think it kind of hearkens back to this idea of wanting to see what that, what that flow chart looks like, how it gets implemented. Um, and again, if we could see that at our next meeting, I think that would be really helpful. And if at that point, we could even have kind of a sense of the shape the RFP is taking, so that we can kind of get a sense of exactly what it is we're looking for in a, in a mental health partner, that could be really helpful, and I think it could solve all the problems.
I think that makes perfect sense. So, thank you, Ms. Martin, for that clarity, and, um, again, and, um, I'm seeing some head nods, Mr. Mayor, but given the, um, the requirement of resources here to get these posted, to get these RFPs going, um, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if that requires a motion or if head nods are sufficient, um, but I would like to proceed with whatever the requirement of the committee is in order to proceed formally, uh, tomorrow with getting those posted and getting that RFP starting to get crafted.
I would love to see the day when head nod, head nods are adequate.
So, you want action on the?
I, I think that. I, I could just expand my motion to include the first two recommendations, as well as adding a third recommendation for a third-party review and audit of student services.
Incorporated within that second bullet, as Ms. Martin said, is that sufficient for you, Ms. Dorothy? If so, that'll.
No, I thought the second bullet was more partnering with an organization. I'm really looking at how we're going to incorporate the twenty-nine new social workers, how we're going to, uh, you know, what we're going to bring in to really provide student services in a, in a more effective way. So, I, I think it's more than just partnering.
If I could, what, what I would be envisioning as part of that RFP would be that they would serve not only to provide the service, but to provide that oversight, to be able to bring that expertise to do the review in, in terms of ensuring a, an effective implementation. Does that make sense? So, basically, we would be bringing in the mental health experts, not only to provide direct services to students, but also to provide the direction and, and as a partner, to ensure that we're implementing things appropriately.
I don't know.
Ms. Dorothy wants. I mean, this, uh, Ms. Dorothy wants a review. If the first bullet works and we hire twenty-nine present, present, um, social workers, who's going to direct them where to go? We're just going to do that with our own, uh,
I think it's.
Administration, right?
Yeah, I just.
Superintendent?
So, we'd basically be requesting to see what two RFPs would look like? Okay, so if you could, then we can review the two and go from there. Does that make sense? One for the number two, the mental health services.
I'm sorry, can I speak?
All right, we're getting out of hand here.
Sorry.
I think it's.
The first one is to post twenty-nine positions. The second one is that if the twenty-nine positions don't work, then we're going to go to an outside source. Is that the right, is that the way I'm looking at it?
If we're impacted by the staffing shortages, which is a high probability in this environment, then we would, uh, simultaneously work towards, uh, a partner organization.
Right, and that partner organization would provide counseling support to our students. They might not necessarily be experts in school-based systemic structural things that we're, so it's a different piece, it's a third piece. It's how I'm looking at it.
Right, right.
Because, and I think it's going to be hard to even find, um, a partner who's able to provide it, because there's no, it, there's so, it's so difficult to find social workers to work with young people right now. There's a shortage of them, uh, you know, to get counseling services for young people right now. And the partner agencies that we'd be going to are dealing with the same staff shortages that we're going to be dealing with trying to get more social workers. But I see that as separate.
Okay.
Ms. Desmond, are you following? I, I just want to make sure that we can staff what the request of the committee is. Is it clear for you, Ms. Desmond?
I think I'm hearing two different things. I think I'm hearing the acceptance of the recommendations that I've made as one motion, and then it sounds like there's a second motion for the systemic, um, review of how we're handling social, emotional, and mental health. They're two different things. Social-emotional curriculum is, is supporting how children behave with each other, how they engage. Mental health really is the issue that I think is of, uh, greater concern in the sense that it has an immediate need. Uh, and we need to support our children in, in that area, as well as adults.
All right, so, we're going to do the first two bullets, right? And then you want to see if we can do the third one with the review, if we hire enough, social workers?
I don't see that what I'm asking for is separate from the first two. It's adding a third. It's doing a review of our student services, mental health support.
I think I'm, I think I'm definitely following here, Mr. Mayor, um, I think.
And it's not, and I, I see your point, Dr. Boyd. It's not slowing anything down. You could post those positions, we can move forward with trying to set, set up the partnerships with, um, partner agencies, but in addition, we're looking at, and maybe you could go back and see who did it before, but it was over fifteen years ago that we had this review.
I think I'm following, I just, and it sounds like Ms. Desmond's following. I just want to make sure that the minutes are clear so that we have alignment. Do you have it, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Sure, why don't you read the question back?
So, to, um, post twenty-nine social worker positions, develop an RFP as a contingency if open positions are not attracting enough atten, applicants, as well as, um, have a third-party audit to review our sm, social-emotional learning in, in schools? Or student services? Okay.
Here, so, mental health support and SEL, uh, services.
Mr. Mayor, I, I rarely ask for to speak. So, at this point, I, I really want to talk, because I think we're going out of hand. You know, I, I would support, um, the hiring of the, of the social worker. So, can we, can we hold on the, the motion, uh, till the next meeting? Are we, do we need to do it right now?
Hold on what now?
Uh, the, the, the motion by, uh, Ms. Dorothy. Can, can we do that for the next, uh, meeting? Instead of now, we, we, we're discussing, we're not settled, everybody's confused. I'm confused, I don't know what to vote on. I'm not going to be voting for it, because I don't understand what we're trying to do. So, I will vote on the, I will support the hiring part, but the other part, can we just do it? Put as a formal mo, as a motion?
Well, we'll just, what if we do this? We'll vote on all three separately. The first one is to do the hire, the second is to develop an RFP as a contingency plan, and the third one is basically, um, just a review of our, um, what was the word, our student service support. So, it's just, so the third one is just a review to make sure that we're doing, following all the right process to serve our students. Does that make it easier?
Can I offer just one?
Well, let me, let me just finish up with Mr. Lay. Does that make it easier?
Uh, I just, do we need to do it right now on the floor to make a motion right on the floor?
Well, we're trying to get it all done now, so we're just.
That urgent? Are we in that urgent to, to, to have that done?
Well, it's, the, the motion was made and seconded, so, yeah, it's on the floor. Okay, so why don't we do, vote on the first two together? All right, do them separately. We'll do them separately.
Can we do the first two together? Because the first, the ones that were recommended by the district, can we just take those together and then take Ms. Dorothy's motion as a separate motion? And can I just ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
What is student services? What is being defined as student services? If I can ask Ms. Dorothy to just explain what that means? Uh, because she mentioned a clinician at the administrative level, and I certainly was not here at that time. So, I'm, I'm unsure, is, is that a social worker now that is, um, at what, as an assistant superintendent at one time? And is, so are we only talking about social workers, or are we? So, I'm, I'm just, I need clarification about what is student services?
I, I.
Okay, Ms. Dorothy?
I, I'm fine with substituting mental health, if that makes it easier for you. But I, I want to remind the committee, we are doing an outside audit of the Family Resource Center. It's not unusual to do that, and it's not taking away from the time that we're going to be posting these other positions.
So, you just want to do a review of the mental health services that we're doing?
Right, to see if we can provide more effective if we're going to hire three-million-plus social workers to have someone look at how we're doing it and make recommendations to us about being more effective with it. I, I, I don't think it's that difficult, and it's not in any way conflicting with what the administration has recommended in terms of moving forward with hiring social workers, partnering with outside agencies. And I would, to my colleague's timing concern, we, we know we're facing, uh, mental health issues with our students. So, the sooner we get this audit, and the sooner we get these people hired, the sooner we can provide those services.
Is that clear or not? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we need to make sure that whatever evaluations that we're going to get on this, that the staff is also included on that. I think it's, it can't be just, uh, students. It, the staff is also involved with this and, and, and is also, uh, living under the same stress, stressors as our, our students are. So, I think we need to keep that in mind, uh, when we do have this evaluation of, of our system, to make sure that we are providing everybody with that kind of support. Thank you.
All right, so, so, motion to accept the first two.
Okay, so, motion to post twenty-nine social worker positions and develop an RFP as a contingency if open positions are not attracting enough applicants.
So, that's the first motion. Motion made by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Dorothy. Roll call on that.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dorothy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Next motion is to review the, what's the wording on that, mental health? Okay, do you want her to repeat it?
Recommend a third-party to review, um, uh, student services, mental health, student, student services? Mental health services? Okay. Okay, so, uh, mental health services. Mr. Dakota?
So, it was already seconded by Ms. Martin on that one, so, motion to re, to review mental health services to our students.
Right.
Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dorothy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Four yeas, two nays, one absent, approved.
Anything else on this report?
No, Mr. Mayor, that concludes that report. Uh, the next report, uh, up will be the budget update. For sake of, um, brevity and efficiency, these will be, at this juncture in the year, monthly updates for the committee on the budget update. Uh, you should expect those each month, if that helps the committee in processing this information here tonight.
Okay, Ms. Turner?
So, the agenda tonight is to, um, review the current FY twenty-one, twenty-two financials, which would include a grant review, projections of budget busters, and strategizing. Okay. Strategizing, um, leveraging all projected year-end balances. We'll also discuss next steps for FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget process, and we want to determine the net effect of current year's real, reallocations on next year's budget. That would include an ESR update, less money spent this year on the grant results and more available next year, and two strategies on how to maximize the amount that we carry over to assist with learning loss for next year, too. Uh, from this point forward, we're going to do a continuous review of two budget years simultaneously to ensure that we're maximizing every funding stream. Next slide, please. Next.
One more slide.
Yes, good. And this FY twenty-one current budget review, what we had to do, step one, was we reviewed all current grants to ensure that, I mean, we have a lot of grant money right now and a lot of positions. So, in order to, to do an accurate projection, we have to make sure that all of the staff that have been trickling in, being hired, um, are all hitting the grants. So, we did a review of all current grants. We ran, ran projections on all of the budget busters that you're aware of, such as salaries, sick leave buyback, substitutes, transportation, and health insurance to help determine the net effect of year-end projections. We did a lever, um, the third step was to leverage and maximize all revenue sources by using fund management. Next slide, please. Uh, the step one, when I say, um, talked about ensuring all grant staff are charged to the grants, um, we don't charge all grants, staff directly, directly to the grants right now. Typically, if you have Title I tutors, we would automatically charge them to Title I as the year goes on. But we're being strategic right now with, like, say, the social workers that are supposed to hit ESR. We're not changing all of their account numbers. We're letting them continue to hit the local budget, so that if we end up having additional money left over at the end of the year on the general fund, we would let the costs sit on the general fund instead of moving it over to the grant, which means we would eat up the, um, surplus on general fund and allow the grant, um, dollars to carry forward. Next slide, please. This slide is just a summary to show you, based on some of the biggest grants that we currently have, such as ESR three, ESR two, Title I in the SPED IDA, and the Title III grants. It's just showing you what we budgeted for positions. And on the right-hand side, it's showing you whether it's in process being, um, the salaries are being moved or if, um, the position wasn't hired yet. This is just my summary to know the impact on the local budget projection. Next slide, please. So, the next step, as I explained, was to run projection for the budget busters. Next slide. Uh, um, one thing to point out is one operational challenge for us, such as the staff shortages and things like that. That all leads to a financial opportunity. So, this spreadsheet in front of you is just one example of the budget buster projections. So, if we have a payroll projection, it's forty pages long. We take every staff member, what they've been paid year-to-date, estimate how many weeks of additional pay they have to determine their, um, cost for year-end. As indicated here, if I did the November, um, your October thirtieth end date, we looked as though we would have one-point-one million dollars short in salaries, which I knew wasn't true, because we have a lot of salary vacancies, um, I mean, vacancy savings. When I went through the grant review, the adjustment, um, rows that are listed there show that these were all the additional people that needed to be moved over to the grants, like the social workers, the IT director, uh, assistant principals. After those people were all moved to the grants, that would result in a four-point-three-million-dollar salary, say, um, projection for savings. Um, we have been spending it, and I want to keep it in a list format so that you, you can all recall as we go what we've agreed to add to eat up those, um, surpluses, such as, um, a hundred-and-twenty thousand for the SRO retiree pool, the twenty-nine PBR teachers, security guards, and now the twenty-nine social workers for half of a year. After spending those additional dollars, we still may have a one-point-four-million-dollar surplus in savings. Again, that's due to savings from thirty-five retirees leaving, and we replace them with thir, um, younger people. And it's also because of the vacancy savings of unfilled positions. That one-point-four million could be used to offset other budget busters. Um, next slide, please. So, other budget busters to consider, and these will, will get more detailed as we go on, but at this point, it's just, um, more informational for you. The sick leave buyback, we already have thirty-five, um, retirees listed, and the, um, the amount is looking at nine-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. That leaves a hundred-and-fifty thousand remaining for the rest of the year. So, if we get many additional, um, retirees, that may be a, an account that's short. Transportation is also projected to be short due to all of the nationwide shortages on, um, bus drivers. We're paying double the money on all of the individual bus companies. Um, we are paying more because of DCF and homeless students. are paying more because of DCF and homeless student populations have increased. So where, one way or the other, transportation is looking as though we might have to add more to it. Out-of-district costs are starting to show higher than budgeted due to new students being placed out of district, but I'm not concerned with this at this time because we have the circuit breaker revolving account and Fed stabilization accounts and substitutes. They're not, we're not showing a shortage in substitutes right now because, as you know, we're having a hard time filling substitutes. So we're not showing a shortage, but we did agree to increase the rate to do other initiatives that may start to attract them. So again, these would be the budget busters that I continue to track monthly. Next slide, please. The third step was to leverage or maximize the projected year-end balances. If we do a continuous budget-to-actual review for grant and local dollars, because again, usually I don't focus on the grants with you as much as I do with the general fund, but because of all the SRR funding, I think it's very important for us to come and present constantly the budget-to-actual for both grants and local dollars. With this review, we'll strategize and reallocate to avoid returning dollars to anyone. We don't want to give any money back. Just so you know, in the past couple of years, we've had to reallocate due to savings from remote learning issues, limits on services such as transportation. This year, we're facing similar savings, but it's more due to the supply chain that we're facing and staff shortages. Next slide, please. This slide is just the same slide that I presented earlier showing you the summary of a payroll projection, but it's, I highlighted the 42, the $4.2 million for social workers. Here's an example of being strategic. If I see that we have $1 million of unspent dollars on the local side, I would leave the $1 million worth of social workers on the local side and reduce the amount that we charge to SRR. So that's one way we're going to strategize to avoid losing money, and we're also going to use the surpluses to fund shortages in the budget busted areas, and we can replenish revolving account balances as we've done in past years. Next slide, please. This slide is just the summary, as we've shown you in the past, of revolving fund. If you think of it like savings accounts or indicators of how we're doing financially overall, we put projections, goals for FY20, projected actuals, then we did a goal for FY21. We were hoping to go from, when we had a negative 0.3% in 2018, we had a goal to go up to 3.46% of revenue, revolving account revenue compared to the overall budget, but I'm happy to say we actually went up to 5.41. The things to understand on this page is because we're doing so well in all of these revolving accounts, we have less room for us to take a surplus and move it over to a revolving account, so I have to watch the salins. One thing on this page is if you look at the food service revolving, we thought we were going to have 2.4 million as our FY21 account balance, but we ended up with 4.4, and we need to start spending. We need to invest in the better quality that we all talk about in kitchen equipment, because this is really good news to have this much money, but that money is supposed to be for reinvestment and things like that. We can't go over, we can't have too much, or they're going to cite us and say, spend it down. So we can do that together, and as you know, the new SPED stabilization fund is now listed on here so that you can continue to watch that grow. And the other two major revolving accounts, which is the use of facilities and special ed circuit breaker, as you can see, both of those, we were very close to our goal amount. Next slide, please. The next steps for the FY22-23 budget, those are listed on the next slide. If you can go to the next slide, please. On this slide, it's just, I tried to map out all of the school committee days and the leadership, principal leadership dates, so that you can have an idea of how, what steps we'll go through. The key things for me to note would just be to say that we're going to do an expense budget updated soon. We'll update our current year budget and show you what that would cost even if we just maintained it. We're going to present the budget process to principals. The governor's numbers are released in January. We're going to share with you in February the SBB pool, the wakes, the fair student funding update, and the governor's confirmed initial budget. We will share with the principals the fair student funding workbooks in February. Also in February, we will talk about baseline rules, guardrails, and the sample workbooks. We'll share with you in March the summary of impact to schools based upon all the decisions we make throughout the budget process so that you can see when each individual school has an increase or a decrease. We'll have a budget drop-in session with the CFO throughout March, and we'll also do the budget defenses with the schools in March and April. We'll have our finance subcommittee meetings in April. The budget presentation is scheduled to be on May 4th. We also plan in May to have the two budget public hearings, and we're hoping to have a budget adoption on May 18th. Next slide, please. The next section is just doing a net effect of two budget years thus far. Next slide. Just some points of the current net effect. As of quarter one, we've transferred costs of ESSA, not SRR, but ESSA, which are the title grants, the ESSA grants. We had, each of those grants are two-year grants, so last year's grant money was carried forward if it was not used. So we moved cost from current year title grants to last year's second year to make sure we're wiping out all of those funds, which means our title grants this year might carry forward again and have balances next year. Salary savings resulting in projected salary surplus will allow us to fund shortages in other budget areas, replenish revolving accounts, and/or increase the SPED stabilization account, and potentially spend less in SRR to allow for larger carryover to next year. The other net effect was our fund was approved and needs to be, I mean, fund need, I'm sorry, I don't know what that says. Fund approved and need to be approved ideas, such as additional security, PBI teachers, additional EL teacher at the Sullivan, and suggested increases to social workers. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is just things to remember. We wanted to remind you that strategic fund management requires consistent review of multiple budget years to ensure maximizing every funding stream. We must spend the funding streams with shorter timelines first to ensure that the funds are not wasted and unused. This causes grants with longer contracted periods to show larger unused balances while we strategically use past year surpluses. For instance, we're currently charging year, current year tutors to year two of last year grants before we start hitting the current year grants. This is done purposely since we can carry unused portions of grants to next year. Another example of that, just so you know, is many districts are being cited for not spending SRR dollars because they're behind with planning and using. We are using the money, but if I looked at SRR right now, I didn't put the social workers over there yet because, again, I'm trying to be strategic and not move it over until I know we've fully spent the current year general fund. Another thing to remember is that grant revenue or amounts drawn down are based on actuals and not amounts encumbered. For instance, we may need $100,000 for a grant salary. The amount we have requested to date will only reflect the actual amount paid and not the amount we know we need for the entire year. So that's another example of SRR might not be fully spent, but that's because we have to wait until we go throughout the year. The third thing to remember is that we'll continue to present on the current year with projected closeout, separate from the FY22-23 budget, since they relate to each other. We'll keep you updated on the net effect of overlap in the two years and how we strategize carrying forward funds through SRR management, pre-purchasing, and/or replenishing the revolving accounts. And that's the presentation.
Any questions on that? Ms. Arnie?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. Thank you for this report. I think it's very informative. I'm just wondering, we always used to get year-to-date financial reports, and we haven't been getting those. Would we be able to, you know, include that as well? Because I think it is really the best way to see how our school finances are progressing when we look at how we're actually spending it down.
Absolutely. That's, I try to simplify things, so, but if you like the reports and the detail, you can, I can give you the year-to-date. I can actually compare it to how much we do a report that's called a historical actuals report, where we compare, you compare this period to what we spent last period, last year at the same timeframe for all the accounts. And then, you know, so if you see one account significantly less spent this year, I would be able to identify that and have an answer for you. So I can provide those.
Well, I'm thinking even just like quarterly. Like, if we had something for Q4 and then something going into Q1 of the new year, and just to kind of be able to monitor our finances by how we're doing on budget, kind of thing. So, whatever is easier for you.
Yes, and I can definitely do that, and I also wanted to take this opportunity because, to say that delays in contracts, you know, when we were talking about contracts, delays in contracts actually impact my ability to accurately project because if I don't have contracts listed in there, it looks unspent, even though we know the dollars are there earmarked for something. So I wanted to point out one additional takeaway from the meeting that we did have. I actually got tongue-tied a little while ago because of one thing that we're facing here. As you, as we've all discussed, we're trying to build relationships with the city, which is very beneficial when you do. Other departments, we've built relationships and we've overcome issues together. So when I'm trying to be transparent with you and explain a situation, it makes it difficult to do that. So how do you balance transparency with diplomacy? But anyway, as I explained that night, we get confused when the law decisions sometimes change, and I shared some examples on that night of how we might have a special ed director get a contract one year and then the following year not. We could have a parent transporting her child for two years, and then on the third year, they say, no, she now needs commercial liability insurance. So I was sharing those examples with you to help understand that there are issues, mistakes made on our end simply because we don't know when and why decisions have changed. So I wanted to remind you of that. I also wanted to remind you of, we provided log examples. We keep thorough logs of every time we reach out and when we receive a response. So we shared those examples in my packet with you that night. My takeaway that I did not mention when Ms. Martin was talking was that I think we should invest in a contract management system, because we, right now, it's my, it's two departments, and we could both sit here and point fingers at each other, which does not solve anything, but we could do that. If we had a contract management system, then it would increase accountability, transparency, and offer you paper trails so that you can see through a computer whose logs are accurate. So I wanted to give you that takeaway, being that we do have additional funds now, and we do know that delays in contracts will impact the, my ability to share projections with you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendents, A81 to A84, as reports of progress. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. New business budget transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendations within your packet is, it's recommended approval as written. Ms. Turner can share with you specifics if there are any questions from the committee.
Could you just explain the transfer, Ms. Turner?
Sure. So the transfer is a two-part transfer. One is, as I was explaining, we need more funds in the special ed transportation line. So we moved funds from a 993, which means a central office, TBE teacher line, which is not being used because the teachers are actually being charged directly to the schools. So we're moving that unused portion of the teacher line to SPED transportation, conferences and seminars, and special programs to fund the currently approved contracts. And then the second one is just the Lincoln School. As you know, that when they budget, they assume they're going to spend X amount of dollars in each category, but they're moving money from the contracted service line to their general supply account line, and this was requested by the Belgian principal.
Okay, could you go over the first one again? Because I get SPED transportation, dual enrollment, and school, score peer mediation.
So those, these accounts, the dual enrollment and the score peer mediation are funded. They are budget items, but as we're cleaning, we're cleaning up Munis as we go to make it reflect all of the budget codes with the DESI accounts. So we moved, we had the money in the TBE professional classroom teacher account. We moved it over once the accounts were created, the 993, the dual enrollment program and the score mediation program. Once the accounts were corrected, we moved the money from the TBE teacher account into those. Those were approved in the budget. It just wasn't in the Munis account codes. And then the SPED transportation is to increase the SPED transportation budget due to additional need. You have to cover, we haven't spent all of the SPED transportation, but in order to have a contract, you have to, so I should clarify that.
All right, but on the first one, you said you're moving the funds from the TBA to conferences and seminars.
That's just the name of the, this is just the name of the actual accounts in Munis, but the conferences and seminars and special programs are those social worker accounts. The account number matches. See, if you, that's my, I should be clearer with, you know, make sure the words match, but if you look at the actual account numbers, they all match. It's just here was a summary of what Munis says, and this is, in other words, the top sheet, the memo, is what Munis describes the account as. The second sheet that you're seeing is actually describing what the budget book says specifically.
Okay.
I can, I can update the memo so that it both matches, so the words don't-
Well, just next time it would be easier for us if they match.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Any questions on the budget transfers? All right, roll call. Motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to make a quick comment before we adjourn from this meeting. A little historical reference point that today represents the 190th anniversary of the opening of Lowell High School, December 1st in 1831, based on my extensive historical research, which is basically consists of Facebook and Lowell National Park sharing that information. But 190 years ago today, Lowell High School opened its doors as the first co-ed high school educational institution in the nation.
Very cool.
There you go.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Clark. Thank you.
I just love a citizen.
Oy, oy, oy.
Trust me, I would have-